Roll call.
Counsel Baden?
Present.
Counsel Chakoudis?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. I can't see you. Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozzi?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Staubert?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer?
Present. I'll rise for a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right now, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, I think he said, I can't tell because there's a wall in front of me, is, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Brian Lapierre. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President, or the great Wizard of Oz, maybe, behind the curtain. Yes, so we are having this Committee of the Whole this evening. As you know, Mr. President and Counsel colleagues, we were presented with the budget on and around Friday, May 10th. We have since held successive Subcommittee Budget Hearings with the Counsel Subcommittee and other guests who attended with their respective Department Heads. And those meetings occurred on May 14th, and then last Tuesday, on May 21st, we concluded those. And tonight, as you know, we are happy to have the mayor present the overall budget to the Counsel, to the Counsel of the Whole, and we look forward to hearing from the mayor and then thereafter from Sean Cronin, who has been the Deputy Commissioner assigned to Lynn as the, sort of, the consultant that helps us through our budgetary issues over the past year or so. So, without further ado, I think this Counsel is ready to hear directly from the mayor, so I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to go to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Counsel. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today and present a balanced fiscal year 2020 budget totaling $367,935,216, which sufficiently meets Department needs within the continued fiscal constraints we face in the City of Lynn. When I took office last year, the fiscal health of the city was at a breaking point and would cry at us to borrow, with all of your support and help, you were part of that legislation, $14 million to balance the fiscal '18 and '19 budgets. Due in large part to the partnership with our CFO, financial team, and Department Heads, I am pleased to state that we've made some progress that begins to pull in out of its current fiscal situation. We do not get here overnight, and we will not get out of this overnight. However, the proposed 2020 budget puts us on the right track. It does not include any one-time revenue streams or statutory borrowing from the state. And again, that's great news for us, and again, working with all of you, I know we've moving forward and working to move the city forward. We need to continue to be diligent and look not only at the near future but how we position our city for years to come. I'm proud of the interdepartmental communication that took place throughout the process, which included difficult decision-making to bring the budget into balance. I want to thank the Department Heads, they're here tonight, and their staffs, for their cooperation and collaboration, especially the financial team and their staffs. The process of the fiscal '20 budget was a collaborative effort with the Department Heads, and we met numerous times to work through this. It began in late October, which was earlier than in a lot of people's memory in terms of trying to start the budget, get the process moving forward, and make sure that everyone was involved as we moved it forward. And budget instructions at that point called for level funding of all line items and a detailed set of timelines that produced a first draft of revenue and expenditures, generated about one week after the Governor released his budget on January 23rd. So the work we did from October into November and December led us to the point where, once we had the Governor's numbers, we could actually start to put it all, the pieces together because we had an understanding of what the Governor's budget proposed. Department Heads at that point were asked to submit a mission, current highlights, and future goals for their respective departments, which they've done, and I think you've had a chance to see. In February and March, meetings took place with all the stakeholders to refine the budget request to meet the projected revenues. We held additional Department Head meetings, and the financial team was in close communication with Department Heads for input on where the modifications to their budget could be made. All of this work culminated in the submission of a budget book to the Counsel on May 10th, giving the Counsel seven weeks to review and consider. We're in the middle of that process now, and I know you've had a couple of Subcommittee meetings, which is an important part of that process, but giving you seven weeks to review, consider, have meetings before needing to vote prior to the new fiscal year, which we anticipate we'll be able to get done, and that's really a kudos to everyone to get this budget done before July 1st so that we're ready to go into 2020. And we're in the process of hopefully making that happen with all of your help. This document is easily readable for the public and includes an organizational chart and narrative for each department describing its mission, core functions, previous year's highlights, and future goals. It's a five-year budget forecast, a glossary of key terms, which will help the public and people who want to take a look at this budget to understand the budget and what it means, a five-year capital improvement plan, and departmental line item details. Measuring and monitoring this information is crucial to our ability to reflect upon our efforts and their effectiveness. It is the foundation on which we hold ourselves accountable. It helps us look for ways to apply the successful elements of completed projects to both our current and future endeavors and provide us an opportunity to take stock of challenges in order to address them, supporting the city's best work. Each year, we will build and improve upon this budget book, but I want to thank our CFO, Mike Bertino, for leading the charge and creating a budget document the City of Lynn has never seen before, and we're all very proud of. As you all know, during our budget building and forecasting process, the FY 2020 budget had a projected structural deficit of approximately $5 million with no funds to address capital or changes due to collective bargaining. My first priority was job preservation. Six unfilled positions in various departments will remain unfilled; those salaries were removed from their respective budgets. When we looked at one-time expenses that could be paid through current fiscal year's free cash, again, a common fiscal practice for all municipalities, these items which are currently before you for review and approval include new voting machines, tasers for the police, paying off the snow and ice deficit, a one-time grievance settlement, and much-needed IT upgrades for City Hall. The street light and worker compensation line items were reduced to better reflect the average anticipated use. Street light savings due to the LED conversion, which is almost completed, and we've received almost universal support. It's really impressive how those lights look. I want to thank Inspection Services, Mike Donovan and that team, for helping us work through that and make that a reality, and as we've talked about in the past, there'll be substantial savings to the city moving forward by making that investment. We also anticipated a balance in the workers' comp line from this fiscal year, which is money that we can use towards FY 2020's budget. The budget presented today uses the Governor's estimates of state aid and includes contractual increases for contracted vendors servicing the city. This budget better aligns personnel positions with Department needs without adding any additional staff due to fiscal constraints or reducing any permanently placed employees. This budget fully funds our net school spending requirement for education at $159.3 million, fully funds our state requirement for the library, and budgets the city's share of health insurance costs based on a projected 100% utilization. And for the public, that means that if we use every dollar we need to cover our insurance for this year, that's what the funds are based on, so we fully have funded that at 100% utilization. Our snow and ice budget includes an increase of $215,000, bringing our total snow and ice budget to $1.3 million, which is much more of a realistic average running year-to-year amount than we've had in the past, which allows us to be in a better place moving forward, particularly if there's a pretty bad winter. We know we have at least some funds there to minimize the cost to the city. Due to current fiscal constraints, a small number of pay-go capital equipment purchases are being recommended to replace older equipment, including three police cruisers and two infrared cameras for the fire department. In addition to these pay-go capital items, a capital improvement plan has been created. This plan, we've presented it to the Counsel, the presentation, and it's in this budget. It's a fluid document, so we understand it's year-to-year, and it's subject to authorization. So we have made a commitment to a five-year capital investment plan, but that's subject to authorization based on the dollars that are available. It's our goal to start to make those investments; it's important to our community, but again, it will be subject to authorization based on our ability to pay for those investments. It's my intention to submit a bond authorization to the Counsel this summer that addresses some of the larger capital needs we face in the city. For example, two fire engine pumper's, and I'm sure you've heard of the need, as well as two DPW-alarged chassis trucks, which, again, are a substantial need at the Department of Public Works. As our fiscal health improves, our ability to fund the growing capital needs the city faces will also improve. This budget increases our reserve fund by $200,000, bringing that fund up to $1.2 million. The statutorily required supplemental reserve fund from our legislation will carry over the $847,000 from FY '19. The FY '20 budget increases that supplemental reserve that is statutorily required, another $1 million. So that total in that fund, again, based on the legislation that was passed and the statute, will total $1.847 million that will be in that fund. Ideally, I would like to have put an additional $400,000 in the supplemental reserve fund, but we are only able to meet the required amount in order to close the budget gap this fiscal year. Free cash transfers currently before you for review and approval, which have been presented and will be discussed over the next few weeks, and I know you've had at the Subcommittee level, include $500,000 into a capital and stabilization fund, which allows us to meet needs that crop up related to capital investments we have to make, and $1 million into a rainy day fund. Again, those dollars need to be approved at the Counsel level, but it starts to bring us a little bit closer to where we should be. Communities like Lynn should be, you know, typically fiscal practice is our reserves are between 5% and 10% of our overall budget. So if you do the numbers, 5% to 10% of $367 million is a lot more than the $2 or $3 million we are allocating, and that is what we should typically have so that, under circumstances beyond our control, we have an ability to address that. We do not have that right now, so moving in that direction, but the goal is to get us between 5% and 10% in our reserves so that we will be where other communities that are much more healthy fiscally can then address their needs. Again, you never know when a hurricane comes in or other instances come in where we have to have dollars. We need to make sure that those dollars are available in our reserve fund, and we're working in that direction. The reserves that we outlined, just so you get an idea of what it is, is 1.1% of our overall budget, so we're substantially below where we should be, but we are, as I said earlier, we're making progress to head in the right direction. Our revenue projections continue to be a challenge, which, part of the revenues calculates a 2.5% levy increase, which is allowed under proposition, 2.5, estimates new growth at fiscal 2019 levels, estimates local receipts at fiscal 2019 levels. The state budget is not yet finalized, so our state aid numbers will likely fluctuate, but there is, the Senate and House versions have come out, and those numbers are a bit higher than the government. We are sticking with the Governor's numbers to be conservative. We're not sure what the final version will look like and want to make sure we're in the right place. I'm optimistic about many economic development opportunities that are being pursued on a regular basis and obviously would result in increased revenue, and we continue to see a lot of interest in the community, and we look forward to those opportunities coming to reality. The budget as currently presented is based on status quo health insurance and no wage increases. I am pleased to inform you tonight that we have reached a tentative agreement with the city's unions on contracts through the current fiscal year and on health insurance for the next three fiscal years, subject to ratification by the unions. It's been stated before, health insurance has been the largest budget driver for many years; Lynn is not unique in this situation. This tentative agreement comes after months of good faith negotiations and recognition by all that health insurance costs needed to be addressed in order for our city to move forward. It preserves the much-needed benefits for our employees while realizing budget savings for the city. Once the numbers are finalized and the agreement is officially signed by all parties, and we presented to the Counsel in more detail, and we're waiting for that finalization. It's in front of the different unions; they're looking, hopefully, to ratify it. We will be voting on Thursday to ratify our end in front of the school committee, so we're hopefully close to making that a reality. Again, I want to thank all those involved in the robust negotiation process for their commitment and partnership in helping us get to this tentative agreement. This document is a reflection of our dedication to fostering economic growth, improving our financial management practices, and committing to providing a high level of municipal government services within the continuing fiscal constraints that we face together. I am proud of the transparent, responsible, thoughtful, and prudent use of tax dollars presented to you today. This budget isn't ideal, especially because it does not address the woefully understaffed police department. I am committing to finding a way to add police to our department force going forward, and you heard from the chief, I think I articulate clearly, his concerns and his needs at that level. We need to ensure together the city's financial stability today in order to ensure and promote stability tomorrow and growth for the future. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you and the Department Heads in the year ahead. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and again, it's been great working with all of you as we've worked through these challenging times over the last year and a half. Hasn't been easy, but we are definitely making progress by our work together, and I think we're proposing a very positive budget to all of you under the circumstances and what we've had to deal with over the last '18, '19, and now going into '20. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to go to the last Sean Cronin? Or do you want, it's up to the Counsel. Do you think I'd want to ask any questions of the mayor? Counsel Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I know things are tough and being able to put this together with the current constraints, I think, is a tremendous amount of work, but one thing that stands out to me, and it's something that I think is really a gift to the city, but I think it's falling further and further in disrepair, is the GAI. And I see that that's been cut dramatically, not that it was a lot before, but, you know, that the expenses down there are $3,300. Do we have another funding source?
So there's two issues there. It's a good question, Rick. I mean, right now, we really don't have the ability. We're not adding staff; we're actually not funding staff positions across the board. That's a staff position. In terms of capital needs, and when there was a capital need recently, we were able to go and get that boiler fixed and get the heating to get in there. So, I mean, that's when we talk about why do we need to start to bump up our reserves, that these are the kind of things we need dollars for. So we are well aware of that. We're hoping to build on the work that's been going on, both with the members of the Board at the GAI, as well as the friends of the GAI, to start to see if we can't move in a direction to really make the investment that that building needs. But I can tell you, the commitment is here, you know, within the parameters of what we can do to ensure that, you know, and like I said, when that boiler went, we worked to make sure the boiler was fixed and that the heat got back in that building over a few days without having to see the substantial damage would have happened if we couldn't have got that heat in there during the depth of the winter. So the numbers you're seeing, the reduction, is really the staffing position that was there that, at this point, we're not able to fund.
And so is that going to be a part-time staff?
That's, the position is not there, so I think working with the members of the Board, as well as other departments, we'll have to keep our eyes on what's happening there. But that isn't the only position, and I think, as I said, with the police, they definitely need staff. We didn't fill a number of positions. So at this point, there wasn't an ability to fund that position, which was not filled at that time. Like I said, we didn't want to cut any positions in the city. That was my number-one priority; we are not doing that. But the reality is that we couldn't fund a number of positions across a number of different departments that really are important positions, but at this point, we're not able to do that. So we will be keeping an eye on that, working with the numbers of all the Department Heads, as well as with your support, to ensure that we don't step any further back from where we're at. But at this point, there isn't an ability to actually have a person in that building on a continuous basis, but we will, you know, like I said, working with the Board, and there's, you know, there was, and I know the Counsel President was here, we had a couple of 5th grade classes that went through in Toyota today. We're going to continue to highlight that and make sure that we're involved in that building. It's such a key piece of our community's history, so we need to be vigilant on that, and that's my commitment to you under the circumstances, and hopefully, as we move forward, with a number of places, we can start to get that where it needs to be.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that we have to build up the reserves for contingencies such as Counsel Staubert pointed out, the problems we have at the GAI building, and as we know throughout the city, the fire stations, schools, and we have to, we had the Collins Center report back that we need to improve on our capital improvement program. What is your strategy moving forward, Mr. Mayor, with increasing and improving our goals for the capital improvement plans moving forward within the city budget?
Well, I think the capital improvement plan is a first step forward to identify the real needs. The reality is for us to get into 2020 and balance that we don't really have an ability, and I'm sure you'll hear from Sean Cronin that will, he will address this, and I think in his letter that you all received, he addressed that we need to start to make progress on that. I think the first piece for us was to get to a balanced budget, start to make some changes, and hopefully, the tentative agreement on the health insurance will allow us to get a little bit of breathing room and start to take a look at how we create that plan. But we do have to start to make investments in a capital plan moving forward, and I think, and Sean can speak to this more clearly, but we're not going to be able to address the bigger needs if we can't start addressing the needs moving forward, starting to create a capital plan. The first piece was balance our budget. We're doing some capital with cash on hand, the pay-go, some of those smaller pieces, and then I think as we start to see some other things happening in a positive way, we will be working to address that, working with the Counsel to find ways to really start to invest in the capital needs. And, you know, whether it be the roads and sidewalks, buildings, the GAI as an example, equipment, there's a substantial need that we need to really start getting our hands around. But I think the first step, recognizing where we've come from, is to getting a budget without borrowing money, which, one, we weren't able to do, but secondly, if we weren't able to balance it, we would not have been able to set our tax rate, and we would have been back to square one. So we're making progress. We, I know the report to you suggests that we should be focusing more clearly on the capital needs, and we will be, and that's, again, one of my top priorities, both in before I was mayor, as well as being in the mayor's job, recognizing the real needs. And again, that's going to be an ongoing discussion, how we start to find, the way to start to make some of those investments. We will be putting a bond in front of you to make at least some minor investments related to a couple of different pieces of equipment, and we've got a different strategy on how we can do that with the new CFO. In the past, we've leased equipment. I think we feel it's more appropriate to buy that equipment and put those payments off over a period of 10 years instead of a period of two or three years. So we've got some ideas on how we can start to move in the right direction, but like I said, I think the positive step is getting this balanced budget to you, making an agreement that's going to allow us to start to get a little breathing room and then start to make some other decisions in basic capital investment that will grow into more substantial investments. I know we've had, both privately and publicly, those discussions about the capital needs on schools in particular, so we need to find a way to get, move in that direction sooner rather than later.
Any other questions?
I guess I just had a, Mr. President, thank you. I just had a comment. I want to just thank you and your staff for getting the budget out to us to review it in mid-May, as opposed to in previous years, we were getting it not under your administration, but really under the gun in June, and it was very hard to pore over it and really dissect and analyze. So allowing us the opportunity to really dig in is very helpful from our perspective. And I did say to both Chief McGary and Superintendent Tuttwiler the last couple of weeks, the need for the crossing guards around the city. We've seen a presentation by Officer Magna back this winter where they've been really, really, almost cut into a third of where we were many years ago. We've gone from 150, and it's dwindled to 100, and now we're at around 49. And, you know, there's many dangerous intersections across the city, as we all know. There's opportunity not only to add to that workforce, 10 hours a week, $13 an hour, but also increase those who are existing positions. So I'm wondering if the thought, there's a feeling, maybe not from the chief and their existing Lynn police budget, but is there an opportunity in the school department to try and help us with some support on crossing guards in the fall and try and build that up in terms of winter equipment, clothing allowance, and actual wage for some of these workers?
It's not clear that those dollars can be spent related to the crossing guards, and I think the chief laid out clearly that while we understand the crossing guard challenges, and as chair of the school committee, I'm well aware of that, so I appreciate you bringing it up, but we really need to get police officers on the street, and the commitment is if we can start to be, getting the police to the level they need to be, that we also can take a look at resource officers and some of these other, you know, the crossing guards is a great example, I think, Counsel Up here. And so the question would be whether or not there's an ability to, on the school budget side, to do that. Again, I don't know that that's something we can do, but I think it's a point or something that can be reviewed.
I'm looking at it similarly to the SROs, how we fund that, and from the schools, they're in the schools, it comes from the school department, not necessarily the police. So if it is a chargeable and then it affects net school spending, maybe that is an agreeable or allowable charge, something we should investigate at least, you know, heading into the meeting Thursday.
I appreciate your thoughts on that, and we'll take a look at that.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to second Counsel Lapierre's comments, that I do appreciate the budget being out to us so early so we can reflect on it and question, have an opportunity to question all the Department Heads, and certainly recognize all those Department Heads that are here tonight and have been here through the last budget meetings to answer any questions that we have, so I applaud all of you for working collaboratively as a city through this financial, not a real struggle, but, you know, just a real collaborative effort throughout the city so that people can recognize that everybody is working together, and it's not just a couple of us, it's not just the mayor's office, but everybody, citywide, working together to find a better solution, a better way about the city budget. Thank you.
I think the key is, obviously, teamwork and working together. You can't do it alone, and I think working together, we've had some big challenges, but like I said, I think we're making progress. And as it relates to the budget, you know, this is the first year, putting it in a little different format. We're definitely open to suggestions on what could be, what you think would be helpful to maybe make it even more easily readable and available for the public to understand exactly what the budget is. I think that's the goal, and I know that's your goal. So if any of you, and I know we've talked to you about that, but as you've gotten a chance to review it and read it over the last few weeks, as well as into the final version, or vote on the budget, if you have ideas on how we could actually work, you know, working with Mike Bertino and our office to ensure that the budget continues to evolve in a way that is both, continues to be transparent, readable, and available to the Counsel and to the citizens, so open to those discussions and that input as we move forward.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Would you like to call Mr. Cronin to come up? Will he be able to do a question?
Is there a remote or anything, or?
Yeah, there is. Right on the table. Great, thank you. So first of all, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I'm going to say some of the same things that the mayor did, but also going to probably say some things that are different than what the mayor said, too, because I'm tasked with not just making sure that revenues equal expenditures, but taking a look at the totality of the budget. You know, I'm not here to weigh in on whether or not you should hire more cops or crossing guards or teachers or whatever. You know, I'm here looking at the 30,000-foot view, so, you know, those types of things, you'll have the fun of debating where the money should actually end up. I'm just here to make sure that some of the big things are addressed. So if I can hit the right button. No. All right. Does this actually control that? I don't know if it does or not, but it's all right. I can roll through this. So the proposed budget, I look at this as terms of positives and negatives. First positive, as the mayor said, there are no one-time revenues in the budget, which is great. There's no free cash, there's no, you know... We have it. I'm a plumber, Rick. Great, thank you very much. So I look at these first four positives. No one-time revenues, conservative local receipt estimates, and that's important. That's actually a way that you obviously avoid an operating budget deficit, but also helps you grow free cash. Using the governor's numbers rather than either the House or the Senate, and in both the House and Senate, they're actually higher. So there's about $1 million that could potentially be available to the city if either of those proposals makes its way through. In the education budget, according to CFO, is about $2 million above required net school spending. So those are a lot of positives. In terms of the negatives, there's no capacity inherent at all for any new collective bargaining agreements. That was the, that is the case in the fiscal '19 budget. So that means two years of no wage increases budgeted for in this budget. And it's not just retro. You know, there's two parts of any collective bargaining. You'll have a retro for fiscal '19. Do you have cash for that? That's one question. But as important, if not more important, do you actually have that capacity in the budget going forward? And the answer is no. There's nothing in here for that. So absent two years of zeros, or perhaps as part of the health insurance proposal that the mayor addressed, there's nothing in here for that. It's already been discussed, it doesn't follow the capital plan that was presented by the Collins Center, and I get something in there a little bit to really highlight that. And there's no changes at all to health insurance. So, you know, as I wrote in the memo that you received, the, absent any real structural change, you're going to have a difficult time getting out of the position that you're in. And I know it's easy for me to stand up here and tell you what you should do, and it's a heck of a lot harder for all of you as elected officials to do it. I used to be on the other side, not elected, thank God, but as, you know, on the other side, not just sitting here telling you what you should do. So I understand how hard it is, you know, to get yourself out of the situation that you're in. But absent anything real structural, you're going to continue to be in the cycle that you're in, asking why can't we fund the capital plan? Why can't we hire new cops? Why can't we hire new crossing guards? You know, the list goes on and on. So, you know, health insurance is a big part of that. And if you step back and you talk about health insurance and potential collective bargaining agreements with no funding source, you're going right back to where you came from a couple of years ago. Those were two of the primary reasons why the city got into the position it was in. Entering the two CBAs, there was no money for on an ongoing basis, and underfunded health insurance. I'm not saying you underfunded, the mayor is not underfunding here, it's actually fully funded, but you're not saving any money, okay? So I don't think you want to take the steps that were taken in the past, because if you go back to that, then you start talking about different forms of state oversight potentially if there was ever a need to deficit finance, and, you know, then you start having discussions about, does that mean a model where all CBAs are approved by the state, you know, which is actually the case in Lawrence? So just, my big takeaway from this is there's, you know, four really good positives in here, but some of the big things that need to be addressed haven't been addressed. So if you go to the next slide, just some numbers, the mayor said it's about $368 million, about 60% of it's from state aid, and about 40% is from property taxes. So that's where you're generating your revenue. Where's it going? About 43% to the schools. That's just the appropriation. So don't try to equate that with how much total money is being dedicated, because you have a lot of the indirect costs that net school spending eligible. But on paper, if you do this, it's 43%. You know, after that, you have public safety at 11%. Employee benefits, about a quarter of the budget. So where's, next slide shows where the increases on both the revenue and the expenditure side, both increases and decreases. So you see property taxes growing by over $5 million. The key in that is 1.8 million is the new growth estimate. That's just an estimate. That could be higher, that could be lower, you know that as you get closer to it, the summer into the fall. But folks believe that that's a pretty reasonable estimate. A $16.5 million increase in state aid. Again, this is based on the governor's budget, the Senate and House actually, greater than that. And the vast majority of that's coming from Chapter 70. You know, you folks know what's going on in the discussions around ed funding. So this is a very significant increase for communities like Lynn fiscal '20. On the expenditure side, the biggest increase, again, to the schools, but, you know, Chapter 70 is really coming in to fund that increase. So that's about a 7% increase in the appropriation for the schools. Just to highlight a couple of the other increases that I won't talk about later. Non-departmental, you see that's grown about half a million dollars. Those are the two reserves that the mayor mentioned. That's a positive, that you're putting some more money aside. Public safety, what I want to highlight here is that even with no additional positions being added to the budget, you're seeing a $700,000 increase. So what's that tell you? Two things. One, there's, even though there's no new contracts, the old contracts are still in place, so step increases, those types of things. And then all the peripherals that are attached to base, as the base grows, those grow. So without any new collars, you have costs in the contracts. And also, if you remember, you hired some, at least budgeted for some police officers and firefighters for three to six months, and now you're going to annualize that. We talked about that last year, saying you're going to have to pay the rest of that next year. Well, now here it is coming before you. So without any new positions added, there's about $700,000 of costs to fully fund those budgets. And then inspectional services, I just want to, I pull that out as a separate department, it's not part of general government, because I think it's such a big part of the city. 1.3 of that is for the schools. So there's a lot of money going into the schools above and beyond the education appropriation itself. So that's where the 5% increase is coming from and going to. In the next slide, I used this one last year, just going to highlight it again. You know, if you step back and look at the components of the budget, not by department but by type of expenditures, 50% is salaries and almost 25% is benefits. So 75%, and this is true in every municipality. It's a service industry, it takes people to run local government, you know, and all the core components of it. So that shouldn't be a surprise. So what that leaves is about 28% for everything else that's in the budget. And then just to break down each of those a little bit, you look at employee benefits. So health insurance, almost $50 million city cost. Pensions, almost $31 million of city cost. Those are two very large cost centers. And if you look at the non-salaries and non-benefits, you'll see that about 26% is for non-salary city expenses, and about 32% of that is for non-salaried school expenses. So basically, all your contractual items, for example, on the city side, solid waste recycling is probably the biggest non-salary contract that you have. So it's just another way of breaking down, you know, how the money is budgeted for. So I want to talk about health insurance. Mayor mentioned it, and I look forward to seeing what's being potentially agreed to. But I didn't have an opportunity to come before you back in the winter when the consultant finally did their report. If you recall, Marsh McClellan was hired, and the end result, as I wrote to you, was $13 million in savings. So to the questions about how do you fund a capital plan, and how do you not remove positions from a department, $10-plus million is the city's share of that, okay? If you look at the, and I know it's hard to see up there, but if you look at these boxes, what this tells you is that if you're an employee in a family plan and you move to the GIC, you would see almost a 25% reduction in your premium. That's a $7,000 decrease in, basically, an increase in your pay, because your deduction's going down in your paycheck, so your take-home pay is going up. Now, to be fair, as I said in my report on this, there obviously would be increases in out-of-pocket costs, copays, deductibles, but there's ways around that. You can structure an H.R.A. where there's money set aside for those employees who are hit hard by increased out-of-pocket costs. But $10 million goes a long way to fund capital, to fund wage increases for employees, and to fund these things. And I'm sure if you all wrote down the top five things you wanted that you don't have money for, you'd be able to fund those types of things if this, and this is the structural change that I'm talking about. So the next slide, net school spending, and used this last year, the oval there shows you where the city got off track and underfunded net school spending. It's great that the city's been able to get back and is now projected to be 1.9 million over in fiscal '20 budget. Free cash, I put this on here for two reasons. One, to show that the last time it was certified, back in the, I think it was in the fall of calendar '18, there was a good increase there. Still not remotely close to the, say, five or six years ago level, but good increase there, and hopefully that will happen. The second reason why I have it on here is, you know, I know that there was some discussion at a recent meeting about the request to spend free cash. I think it's a fantastic proposal to spend, or to put $1 million into your stabilization fund. You don't have a stabilization fund. As the mayor said, you're almost a $400 million entity, and you don't have a penny in a stabilization fund. And seeding the capital stabilization fund with a half a million dollars is another great way to have monies available for unplanned capital needs. It's a great way of doing it. So you're taking one-time money, you're putting it aside for rainy days when you might need it. So, and I know I did write in my required report to you that I was supportive of those, so, you know, to the extent that there's still discussions about it, I think that it's good use. And it's also the plan to close a snow and ice deficit with it, and what I'll call lingering old deficits that reduce free cash, the way free cash is calculated. It's a good idea right now to just wipe those off the books. Then your free cash will be higher going forward. And then in terms of snow and ice, if you wipe it out now, you don't have to budget for that deficit in fiscal '20. So to say it another way, if the plan wasn't to do that, I'd be asking, where's the 1.1 whatever million dollar deficit in terms of revenue covering it in the fiscal '20 budget? But because of that plan, you don't have to do that. So just the capital plan, and you've seen these graphs, this is, I stole this right from the Collins Center. So the top is if nothing changes, and you see a downward trajectory. So this is your existing debt, and it's running off. So you have the opportunity to recapture that debt. But what Collins proposed, and I know I stood up here that night and was supportive of the second part, which was to get back to more historical levels and actually grow it even more than that, and that's basically the purple in the bottom graph. So growing it as revenue grows is a really, you know, it's a fundamental practice that a lot of communities across the state use. And what I want to do is just highlight the importance of this by giving an example. So I am fortunate to sit on the MSBA board as the A&amp;F secretary's designee, and I went back and looked at some of my old packets for when both Pickering and West Lynn School were basically before the MSBA, before the city had to walk away from it because of the vote that failed. So just looking at, I know it was a package, but just looking at one of them. Pickering, $83.7 million was the estimate at the time. Now, Lynn's an 80% reimbursement community, so most people think, oh, I'm going to multiply 83.7 by .8, that's the state share, the balance is mine. So it's a small amount. MSBA has caps, and I say to communities when they come before the MSBA for the first time to be mindful of that, and don't take that reimbursement rate and go back to your office and multiply that by the cost, because there's too many caps that are involved. The biggest one is the per-square-foot. The per-square-foot cost is something like $315, something like that. Do you know what the going per-square-foot cost is now? It's over $400 or $500. So that delta between the actual per-square-foot and the cap is on you. There's also, I think it's an 8% site cost and a 10% FFNE cost, soft cost, I think those are the caps. So when you look at the numbers that would have moved forward, the MSBA was picking up $41.8 million of that, which left the city with 41.9, or almost a 50-50 cost share. If you run that, just, you know, 30-year debt, five-year, 5% interest on a level debt-service basis, that was $2.7 million of debt service. If you look at that graph, you're about five years out from $2.7 million of debt service running off, okay? So if you don't start now and be more aggressive, yeah, it's going to be painful on the operating budget side, but if you need to address this infrastructure, you've got to start taking steps now to basically start capturing, A, the runoff, and using some of your new revenue to plan for capital. You know, West Lynn, just quickly, 105, round numbers, $105 million total. The MSBA shares was going to be 55 million, city share was going to be 49 million. That's $3 million of debt service. So if you add those two together, the city would have been, would have had to find, I know there was a debt exclusion question, but without that, $6 million. You don't even have $6 million of debt service right now. So if you are really interested in improving your school facilities and all the other needs, you know, every, most communities have old fire stations where the trucks don't even fit anymore, structural issues, streets, sidewalks, you know, senior centers, libraries, whatever, rec centers, that price tag's coming home, and you've got to start preparing for that. So again, it's easy for me to sit here and run these numbers and tell you what you should do. It's a lot harder for the mayor and his team and for you to actually implement that, but it takes fiscal discipline. I can tell you firsthand, Lawrence has done this, okay? Lawrence has a robust capital plan, the mayor is committed to growing the level, it was less than 6% on a net basis a few years ago. The plan is to get that to over 7%. In each budget the mayor's done, has lived up to that. So they now have, I think, two small MSBA projects, which is like roof window replacement, boilers, those types of things. But also, they have two core projects. They too are an 80% community, so I warn them, don't just take 80%. But they're going to be able to cover the cost of those two schools by, A, recapturing old debt, and B, growing their commitment to capital to fund those schools. So Lynn can do it, won't be easy, it will put stress on the operating side, that's kind of the rub between the two. So putting money in the stabilization, capital stabilization is a good way to do it, but also being committed to growing. So I'll get off my soapbox about capital, but it is really important for, not just Lynn, but for pretty much every community across the state. So, I mean, overall, yep, revenues equal expenditures, there are some cost exposures there, and I really think, as I've said a couple times already, absent something real significant structurally, you're going to continue to be in this grind where you're not doing exactly what it is you really want to do. So I'll stop there and certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to have any questions, Mr. Trump?
All right. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the mayor or Officer Cronin?
Mr. President, I just think that, you know, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and Mr. Cronin's time and all, but until those contracts are actually ratified, whether the city budget or the school department budget, then they're not a real document at this point. Until those contracts are ratified, we see what the savings are, and we see what's left over.
I'm not speaking for the mayor or CFO or Officer Cronin, but I know our public hearing for budget is on June 11th, which is two weeks away. It is actually two weeks away. So that gives the mayor time to sit down with the unions to ratify the contract. Hopefully, he'll be able to do that, because I agree with him, Mr. Trump, that he's got to ratify those contracts.
I mean, I think we're all thrilled to hear that that's so near to be done, you know, because we do expense-to-income matching, was able to balance it, but really didn't achieve the goals that it ought to do. Hopefully, once those contracts are ratified, that will allow some of those things to take place.
I have a comment, I just don't want to go by. I appreciate Mr. Cronin's comments as well, but, you know, the case study of Lawrence is a little, I think, disingenuous, being eight years ago when they were forced into the group insurance commission, you know, by the mayor at the time, Mr. Lantigua, and, you know, that was savings, obviously, a health fund trust that was bankrupt and issues around labor. I think Lynn's choosing to invest in its workforce, and I think, you know, every community has its priorities, and Lawrence right now is still struggling. It may be fiscally doing well in your eyes, but there's teacher turnover, it's very hard to retain teachers, they've gutted the collective bargaining agreements, they've taken away so many of worker rights in terms of... rights in terms of the healthcare and the, you know, collective bargaining and so forth. And I guess this city, if I could, is, is investing in its people. And I think, whether it's a new school or a new fire station, it's still the people that are inside those buildings that make up what's great about our city and the pride that the workers have coming to work every day. And having a system that rewards longevity and experience and educational quality sometimes is, you can't put a price on that stuff. So, for me, I'm proud of the budget. We will deal with the capital improvements in due time, but I don't want to be compared to Lawrence. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to say, as the council president, I know how hard Council Upia and the Budget Committee has been working with the mayor, with all the department heads. I want to say thank you for coming here on Tuesdays, even people that aren't normally here on Tuesday night, on the council nights. So, hopefully in two weeks, we're going to see that contracts are ratified and move on. I do believe there is some light at the end of this. Let's go ahead to the council.
I'll show adjourn.
You adjourn.
One second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.